Buenas tardes a todos. Hoy es miércoles, 21 de mayo de 2014. Son las 5:38. Todavía no podemos llamar a la reunión. Esta noche estoy acompañado de Ramiro Veliz y Pat Campos, colegas de la junta de la Junta de Trujos. No podemos llamar a la reunión todavía. Vamos a empezar con las reconocimientos.
Señor Ramírez está caminando hacia el interior.
Lo siento. Juan Roberto Ramírez está aquí. Creo que ahora podemos llamar a la reunión. Bien. Bien. Buenas tardes a todos. Ahora tenemos cuatro miembros de la junta de la Junta. Esta es una reunión regular de la Junta de la Junta de la Escuela de la Unidad de la Ciudadanía. Junta de Trujos. Son las 5:37. Y estamos aquí en el complejo de actividades estudiantiles de la Unidad ISD, ubicado en el 5208 Santa Clara, en Laredo, Texas. Los temas a discutir o considerar, que en realidad pueden ser tomados en forma formal, están listados en la agenda. No tienen que ser tomados en ningún orden particular, como se muestra en este informe. Empecemos con... Quiero que todos levantemos la mano para el Pledge of Allegiance y el Pleno Texas, por favor.
........................................................................
.......................................
Bien. Item número dos. Estoy aquí llamando a esta reunión a orden. Señor Veliz, ¿podría llamar a la fila, por favor?
Sí, señor. Señor... Pat Campos.
Presente.
Señor Javier Montemayor.
Estoy presente.
Señor Juan Roberto Ramírez.
Presente.
Y yo mismo, presidente Ramiro Veliz. Tenemos a la cua, señor.
Gracias, señor Veliz. De acuerdo con el registro, hay un miembro de la junta presente. Esta reunión fue llamada de forma adecuada. Y el informe de esta reunión fue publicado de acuerdo con la Ley Texas Open Meetings Act, Código del Gobierno de Texas, capítulo 551. Item número tres. Anuncios de la junta. ¿Algún miembro de la junta tiene algo que anunciar?
Ms. Campos.
No, señor.
No estoy seguro en este momento.
Pasaremos al item número... Bueno, antes de pasar a lo siguiente, señor Santos, me gustaría pedir que en la próxima reunión de la junta tengamos un elemento en la agenda que aborde algunos de los problemas de seguridad que hemos...
Sí, señor. Si me permiten leer un discurso, que creo que es importante y que comparto, obviamente, con nuestros estudiantes y con nuestros padres y con la junta. En las últimas semanas, la ciudadanía de la escuela ha experimentado acontecimientos en y en todas nuestras escuelas, que han causado problemas en nuestra comunidad. Me gustaría abordar esos asuntos. Con respecto al caso de la lockdown de Finley, en aproximadamente las 11:50 del día de mañana, el 14 de mayo de 2014, el Departamento de Policía de Waiter advirtió a la ciudad de la zona de Quail Creek, que requería una lockdown inmediata de las escuelas de educación primaria de Casin y Finley. Por favor, estén atentos a que la ciudadanía de la Unidad de las Escuelas de la Escuela sigue un plan de crisis cuidadoso y desarrollado para responder efectivamente a estos tipos de situaciones. Por favor, estén seguros de que ningún sospecho entró en las premises de la escuela, que ningún estudiante o miembro de la facultad. Todos los miembros de la facultad estaban seguros. Algun tiempo después, un sospecho fue arrestado en el puente de Springfield en Del Mar. La ciudadanía de la Escuela tiene un protocolo que se inicia en conjunción con las agencias de la policía local para alertar a las ciudades escolares de posibles amenazas a nuestras escuelas. Con respecto al campus de la octava clase, por favor me permitan decir que es completamente falso que un estudiante de la escuela de la Unidad, campus de la octava clase, posee una pistola o cualquier otro arma en la campus. La ciudad recibió un crimen de arresto de una pistola en la campus el 2 de mayo. Fue aproximadamente investigado adecuadamente por la policía y el personal, y no se encontró ninguna arma en la campus después de una completa y thorough búsqueda de la campus. No hay estudiante actualmente en el campus de la octava clase que posea alguna amenaza a la escuela. Acciones disciplinares y consecuencias están siendo presididas de acuerdo con el Código de conducta estudiantil de la ciudadanía de la Escuela y la Agencia de Educación de Texas. Social media. También me gustaría hacer un comentario sobre las redes sociales. Las redes sociales pueden ser un instrumento poderoso y útil. Sin embargo, a veces se publica falsa información a través de las redes sociales. Le pido a los padres y guardias de los estudiantes que llamen a sus administradores de su campus o al oficina central con cualquier pregunta o consenso que tengan sobre los acontecimientos en nuestras escuelas. En conclusión, la seguridad de los estudiantes de la ciudadanía de la Escuela es una prioridad. Para el resto del año escolar, se tomarán medidas de seguridad adicionales en todas las escuelas. Realizamos que las amenazas desde el interior hasta las puertas de la campus son fáciles en el mundo de hoy. Reportes de amenazas de cualquier campus de la ciudadanía de la Escuela se toman en serio. Reportes de posesión de armas en cualquier campus de la ciudadanía de la Escuela son thorough e promptly investigados de acuerdo con las políticas y protocolos de la ciudadanía de la Escuela. La ciudadanía de la Escuela es proactiva en su enfoque en la formación y preparación de la personal para la situación de crisis. El verano pasado, todos los administradores participaron en una formación que incluía un escenario simulado de varias situaciones de crisis. Los administradores fueron entonces dirigidos a reunirse con su personal de la campus para desarrollar un plan de crisis único a la disposición del campus en particular y sus necesidades. Este verano, la ciudad se expandirá con esta formación al llamar a las agencias de la policía para ayudarnos en la proporcion de la formación más efectiva para todo nuestro personal. La junta comenzará pronto con el presupuesto. Y los administradores presentarán posibles mejoras que se puedan hacer en todas nuestras escuelas para más seguridad. Además, debido a la iniciativa de la BON, la ciudadanía de la Escuela podrá usar esos fondos para perseguir las medidas de seguridad adicionales que se presentaron a la comunidad el año pasado, como las segundas de seguridad en la entrada principal, mejor control de acceso y en todas las premises, y la actualización del sistema de cámaras de vigilancia. De nuevo, esto es posible debido al apoyo de la comunidad de la ciudadanía de la Escuela y te damos las gracias por eso. Los colegas de la ciudadanía de la Escuela de la Junta de la Escuela proporcionan un apoyo enorme a la administración y con el continuo apoyo de los padres, estudiantes y todos los personal de la ciudadanía de la Escuela, la ciudadanía de la Escuela continuará proporcionando un ambiente seguro y seguro para todos nuestros estudiantes y personal. Gracias.
Gracias, señor Santos. Para el registro, he pedido un elemento de agenda para la próxima reunión de comité sobre la seguridad. Me gustaría ver un plan de cómo nuestros departamentos de policía van a interactuar con otras agencias. Qué se incluye en cuanto a la notificación para los padres, la notificación para los administradores, la notificación para el personal. Dónde va a estar todo el mundo si una de estas situaciones ocurre, por si no se cuenta bien. Pero, ¿alguien tiene preguntas con respecto a eso?
No, señor.
Necesitamos dos más personas que me pidieran que patrocine ese elemento de agenda. Ms. Campos y...
Señor Ramírez y Ms. Campos estarán con nosotros.
Podremos darlo en la agenda. Sí, en la agenda.
Gracias. Número cuatro. Reconocimientos. A un estudiante de la escuela de la Unidad de la Escuela que juega en Carnegie Hall.
Sí, señor. Miembros de la junta, si todos pueden venir. Hoy es parte de una reunión que, como pueden ver, nuestro auditorio está lleno de nuestros estudiantes y personal que realmente han hecho muy bien, no solo para sí mismos, sino también para las escuelas, para su campus y también para la ciudadanía de la Escuela. Nuestros dos salones en la parte de atrás están llenos de estudiantes. Así que si todos pueden venir, vamos a ir adelante y sacar la mesa de la junta y mover la mesa y luego empezaremos. Estamos muy orgullosos de recibir a un piano clásico de nuestra propia escuela de la Unidad de la Escuela, un senior, Enrique Rangel. Enrique hizo su debut recientemente en el prestigioso Carnegie Hall de Nueva York con su victoria en la presentación de piano, que viene el 20 de abril. Fue seleccionado ganador entre cientos de pianistas de todo el mundo buscando un lugar en la highly competitivo 2014 American Proche International Piano Competition. Estudió con "Solero 104 de Petronca" de Franz Lis y también con "Sonata número 7, Opus 83, Movimiento 3", de Sergei Prokofiev. Enrique también ha logrado otros logros este año. Fue el ganador del premio en la competición de piano de jóvenes de 2014 McKinney. Juega primero en la Universidad de Texas del Estado de San Marcos en su competición de piano de jóvenes de 2014 y fue ganador en la competición de piano de cinco estados de Baylor, held en la Universidad de Baylor. Además de sus "List" y piezas de Prokofiev, Enrique también compitió en estas competiciones con "Sonata en Eflato Major, Opus 81, Movimiento 3", de Beethoven. Y Enrique recibió el premio de soloista destacado durante tres años consecutivos en la competición de solo de Texas en Austin. Como dije anteriormente, Enrique es el senior de la escuela de la Unidad. Su instructor piano privado es A.J. Collins Thompson de San Antonio. Los padres orgullosos de Enrique que están en la audiencia son Enrique Rangel y Amelia Rangel. Su hermano menor, Eros Rangel, también juega el piano. Y ahora Enrique hará tres selecciones: "Prenúncio al sinal de C# por Rachmaninoff", "Sonata número 7 en Bfl. por Prokofiev", y el famoso y revolucionario "A2 número 12 en Cm." por Chopin. Nosotros recibamos a Enrique Rangel y creo que va a tomar una foto, por favor.
Así que puedo seguir a Enrique. Es un acto difícil de seguir. Buenas tardes, señor Santos, miembros de la junta, miembros de la audiencia. Me da gran placer anunciar varios de los programas de carrera de educación técnica. Y vamos a empezar con nuestros TAFI. Los estudiantes de nuestro TAFI son aquellos estudiantes que están interesados en carreras en educación. TAFI es la Asociación de Educadores Futuros de Texas. Todos los estudiantes que van a ser reconocidos esta noche han ganado primer o segundo lugar en la competición de la ciudadanía y desde primer a quinto lugar en la competición estatal han avanzado a los nacionales. Todos los estudiantes que voy a llamar a la lista han ganado en los top 10 en competiciones nacionales. Y están compitiendo contra los cinco mejores estudiantes de cada estado. Así que pueden imaginar cuán difícil es. Y hay unos 800 estudiantes que están compitiendo. Tenemos de la escuela de la Unidad de las Escuelas, Ricardo Belena, que compitió en Public Service Analysis. Y Pablo Geronaro, que compitió en Public Service Analysis. Y la donadora de la escuela. De la escuela de la Unidad, que compitió en Recuperación y Marketing, Aileen González, Sara González, Valeria Chávez, Valeria Garza, y su sponsor Amanda Benavides. Estudiantes de la escuela de la Unidad de la Escuela están fuera de la ciudad compitiendo. Pero hay estudiantes que han avanzado a los nacionales. Era Ariana González por Storybook, Cristina Rodríguez por SA, y su sponsor es Nori Rodríguez. Oh, estás aquí. Oh, genial. Siguiente, tenemos estudiantes de la escuela de la Universidad de la Alexandria, Marcos Espinoza, que compitió en "Lección Plan", Suara Rivera, "Leadership Award", y Suara Rivera, seventh place nationals, explorando profesionales de la carrera de apoyo profesional. Su sponsor es Vezilla Gonzalez. Siguiente, tenemos estudiantes de la Escuela de la Salud de América. Estudiantes de la escuela de la Universidad de la Alexandria, que fueron finalistas estatales y también calificadas para la competición nacional como un socio destacado. Esta competición, la selección de socio destacado, está basada en criterios rigurosos que evalúan la creatividad y habilidades de la organización, y está representada por un esquema que los estudiantes mantienen todo el año durante todas sus actividades. Los estudiantes sobrepasan cientos de subvenciones del estado de Texas. Tenemos a Adely Perkins, Alicia Uresti, Lourdes Ruiz, y sus sponsors Belinda Salas, Elizabeth Uresti, María Castillo, Hedy Barajas, Rebecca López, Carlos Gil y Paula Reyes. Y, por supuesto, el director. Next we have an individual student from LBJ High School who participated in the Volunteer Income Tax Assistant Program, which was instituted in UISD District Wide in 2010, 2011. Students in this program enrolled in a class called Financial Services during the fall semester. At the end of the semester, students are administered a test to become certified tax preparers in basic tax preparation. This year, Ramiro Frias, a member of the LBJ VIDA program, became certified in basic and advanced income tax preparation. Ramiro is currently the top income tax return preparer at the LBJ VIDA site, preparing 64 tax returns, volunteering a total of 164 hours during this tax season. Ramiro also created the LBJ High School VIDA Facebook page for LBJ to help with the marketing. He initiated and led in collaboration with other of his volunteers an effort to call a friend to come in and do their income tax returns at LBJ when business was slow. So we're very proud of Ramiro and his efforts. And all of the LBJ High School group, there are 16 students. I've got to tell you a little bit more about this because these statistics are extremely important. Let me tell you about this while they're getting ready for their test. To give you an idea of the type of work that was done this year by all of our VIDA sites, because every high school has one. Comparing it to last year, last year our sites generated 286 returns for a total of $485,000. The top tax preparer last year was United South High School with 105 returns. Total returns prepared district-wide was 266. This year, LBJ was the top return preparer generating a total of 337 returns. Total returns district-wide, 748. United South, JBA, and UHS all doubled their returns this year from last year. LBJ sixed twofold their returns this year. Get this, this year they generated $1,505,468 in tax returns compared to last year's $485,000. LBJ students ranged in hours of volunteer from a low of 60 to a high of 165 hours. Their sponsor is Nancy Gonzalez. Alexander High School, Alexander High School, all of the schools have a club, a VIDA club. From Alexander, we have representatives tonight Avram Perez, Alicia Dean, and Irving Resendez with their sponsor Adriana Bautista. So welcome all of these students and thank you. United High School and United South also have a club, but their students are not able to attend this evening. So congratulations to all.
Next, we're proud to introduce several groups of musicians from our local middle school and high school bands. These students distinguish themselves by achieving what we call in UIL a Sweepstakes Award. And a Sweepstakes Award is that they swept, meaning they got a first division in concert contests, and they also achieved a first division in sight-reading contests. Our first group to report to the stage is from Lamar Bruny Vergara Middle School, band director Remundo Ramos. Also, Yvette Miranda, Assistant Band Director. And joining them on stage, Assistant Principal, Mr. Edmundo Garcia. And we also like to acknowledge the principal, Ms. Claire Flores. Congratulations Lamar Bruny Vergara Middle School. And also in the classification of CCC, non-varsity and varsity, from Clark Middle School, we had two bands that received the Sweepstakes Award. Both bands, director of bands is Gilbert Cuero, and the director of the non-varsity band is Michelle Espinoza. Let us welcome to the stage Clark Middle School Band. So we're very proud of these facilities that we have, and we're thankful to our board members and our superintendent, Mr. Santos. Our next school to receive the Sweepstakes Award is from Antonio Gonzalez Middle School. We'd like to welcome the band members, band directors Carlos Miranda, Assistant Band Director Elias Flores, and we also welcome the principal, Ms. Patricia Perez. Congratulations Antonio Gonzalez Middle School. And as you can see, some of our groups are displaying their trophies, especially that Sweepstakes trophy that they received from UIL. And coming up next, we have a unique situation where one of our middle schools had three bands enter the competition, which is one of the first middle schools in UISD to have a total of three bands. They did bring representatives from each three group. Let's welcome to the stage Traubman Middle School. Director of bands for Traubman Middle School is Jorge Garcia. Assistant director is Lisa Lopez. The principal is joining them, Ms. Leti Menchaca. Let us congratulate Traubman Middle School. Our next band comes from United South Middle School. They received the Sweepstakes in Class CCC Varsity. Band director is Abel Vergara Jr., assisted by Jacinto Davila. Also joining them on stage is the principal, Mrs. Roylyn Wilson. Congratulations United South Middle School Band. As we get ready for the next group, I'd like to mention that the next group has actually a combination of three groups within that school. At United Middle School, we have a unique situation in that we, in addition to our bands, we have an orchestra. So we're going to, members of the orchestra are in here with this group. So in a little while, we're going to be calling to the stage not only the non-varsity band that received Sweepstakes, also the varsity band, and the United Middle School Orchestra. Let's welcome United Middle School Band and Orchestra members. Orchestra directors Ray Peña. Band directors are joining them are Hiram Gonzalez and Jose Lopez, and also the principal Rebecca Morales. Congratulations United Middle School Band and Orchestra members. Now, coming up next to conclude our middle schools, we're very pleased to introduce that for the first time at Washington Middle School, there were two bands that received Sweepstakes Award. Let's welcome to the stage Washington Middle School. The director of bands at Washington Middle School is Jesús Garcia. Assistant director is Abel Garcia. And the principal is Mrs. Beth Porter. And the Principal is Mrs. Beth Porter. Let us congratulate George Washington Middle School Band. As we get ready for our high school bands, we'd like to, uh, I'd like to mention that this year we were very fortunate to have a grand total of 21 groups combined between middle, middle school and high school that received a Sweepstakes Award. And this is the first time for UISD, it is a record. And we're very proud, it just goes to show that these directors have a lot of dedication. I mean, they spent countless of hours working with the students. So we're very pleased to see so many parents here. And we thank the support of our administration at the middle school level. That new middle school schedule really helped our bands seeing them on a daily basis. So we congratulate our administrators also for this new scheduling that we had at the middle school. Up next, we have from JB Alexander High School, the Alexander Bands, Varsity and Non-Varsity Bands. Band Director is Jose Valenzuela. Assistant Directors Lio Perkins, Jacob Thompson, Patrick Lewis. And Principal, Mrs. Dolores Barrera and her staff are gonna be joining them on the stage as well. Let us congratulate the JB Alexander High School Bands. Now, you might have noticed that the trophy for the high school bands is a little larger because these bands, in order to get the Sweepstakes, there was a third component. They had to receive a First Division in marching. So the marching contest was back in October. And we're very proud of our high school bands for not only getting a First Division in concert and sight reading, but also in marching. We're getting very close, we thank you for your patience. And we have coming up next, two bands from United South High School. Let's welcome them to the stage. We had the Non-Varsity Band. Actually, I'm sorry, three bands, let me correct, correct that. There were three bands from United South High School. The third band is under the direction of Robert Ortiz. The second Band, the Non-Varsity, is under the direction of Joshua Martinez. And the Varsity Band is under the direction of Francisco J. Sosa. And assisting them also is Band Director Rodolfo Montalvo. And they still, they're still coming down. We'd also like to congratulate the Principal at United South High School, Mrs. Adriana Ramirez. Big congratulations to United South High School Bands. Everybody got the pictures? I think we did, Mr. Santos. Thank you, congratulations. I'm wondering if there was anybody left behind at United South High School. I think the whole school is here. Wow. Once again, as we get ready to introduce our final band, I'd like to say that, uh, United ISD is very proud to have such an amount of support from the parents and our administration. Our final group for this evening has the distinction as well as United South to have had three bands achieve the First Division. Let us welcome to the stage, United High School Bands. The United High School Bands had a sub-non-Varsity, non-Varsity and Varsity Bands achieve Sweepstakes. Director of the sub-non-Varsity Band is Michael Valdez. Director of the non-Varsity Band is Joe Castro. And Director of the Varsity Band is John Mallon. They're also assisted by Michael Garcia. Joining them on stage is Mr. Alberto Alemán, Principal, and also Mr. Joseph Lopez. Let's congratulate United High School. Congratulations, Band Directors. Mr. Alemán, let's see the Longhorn son. There we go, alright. Congratulations, Mr. Alemán. Okay, thank you. Next, we'd like to bring to the podium Director of Athletics, Mr. Bobby Cruz.
Good evening, UISD Board Members, Superintendent Santos, members of the audience. It is with great pride tonight that we recognize several athletics teams that had an outstanding season this past year. While they're getting up here, the first thing I'd like to say is every year, every year I call the coaches and I ask them a question. I ask them, "How y'all gonna look this year?" And every year, our head coach at United South Tennis, she says, for the past nine years, she says, "We're gonna be, we're gonna be solid. We're gonna be competitive. We're gonna be good." Couple of years ago, she said, "We're gonna open some eyes." A few years ago, she said, "We're gonna beat some people." And this past season, she said, "We're gonna make some history this year." And it's with great pride that we recognize the United South Panther Lady Tennis Team for winning their first district championship in school history. Our head coach is Roxanne Álvarez. Assistant Coach Alex Guerra. Principal, Mrs. Adriana Ramirez. In addition to their first district championship in school history, these young ladies also qualified for the regional tournament. Congratulations, United South Lady Panthers. Our next teams are from United High School. The first team we'd like to recognize is the United Lady Longhorn Soccer Team for capturing the District 29-5A Championship again this year. This is their third championship in the last five years. And this is the third time out of the last four years that they advance. In addition to their district championship, the ladies also advanced to the bi-district round and also won that game. So they're also bi-district champions and area finalists. Congratulations, Lady Longhorns. Head Coach Jerry Vera. Assistant Coaches Erin Lawler and Melissa Spino. Principal, Mr. Alberto Alemán. Congratulations. Also, again from United High School, we'd like to recognize the United Longhorn Men's Soccer Team. The Longhorns captured their third district title in a row. And this is their third title in the last four years. This year, they achieved a ranking of number eight in the state. And we expect great things from them as well. Congratulations, United Longhorns Men's Soccer. Head Coach Mario Gonzalez. Assistant Coaches Paseluis Zamora and Gabriel Medina. Principal, Mr. Alberto Alemán. Congratulations, Longhorns.
Good evening, Board Trustees, Mr. Santos and audience members. I would like to present some of our award-winning cheer and dance teams to you this evening. To start off, we have Colonel Santos Benavides Cheerleaders. They won second-place national trophy at the American Cheer Power Competition. Their sponsors are Cynthia Ramírez and Olímpia Sharafa, and their principal is Dr. Mirta Villarreal. Their cheer members are Selica Ardías, Victoria May, Vanessa Cantú, Kayla Cárdenas, Andrea Casanova, co-captain Nadia Gallegos, Brisa García, co-captain Sofia García, Ana Sofia Caldera Garza, Abigail González, Cecilia González, Andrea Gutiérrez, Zalia Uben, Brianna Lozano, Jocelyn Martínez, Taylor Moran, Megan Ochoa, captain, Katia Peña, Silke Peña, Kristi Ali Ramírez, Bailey Reese, Ariel Valdez, and Priscilla Vera Masca. Congratulations to our Colonel Santos Benavides Cheerleaders. Thank you, congratulations. Our next group is the United Middle School Maverets. They received a national champion award from MA Nationals Dance Competition. Their sponsor is Melissa Reyes and their principal is Rebecca Morales. Their dance members are Vanessa Arispe, Marcela Yala, Andrea Bolanos, Alisa Caballero, Carla Caballero, Patricia Díaz, Sandra Duque, Cassandra Escobedo, Genesis Flores, Chelsea Fuentes, Mia Fuentes, Magali Gallagher, Andrea García, Samira García, Elizabeth González, Cynthia Gutiérrez, Karime Inojosa, Natalia Jiménez, Jade King, Alejandra Martínez, Mariana Martínez, Camila Mascareno, Natalia Mendiola, Amanda Patiño, Kendra Peña, Amanda Ramírez, Bianca Ramírez, Becca Reyes, Alisa Salazar, and Alexa Salinas. Congratulations to the United Middle School Maverets. Thank you for all your hard work, congratulations. Our next dance team is the Linden B Johnson High School Dreamcatchers. The Dreamcatchers received grand champion award at the Showtime International Dance Competition. Their sponsor is Olivia Cárdenas and their principal is Armando Salazar. Dance team members are Salma Alarcón, Samantha Alarcón, Ashley Alvarado, Frida Amaya, Reyna Barbosa, Alejandro Esquivel, First Lieutenant, Melissa García, Carla Garza, co-captain, Leslie Huapo, Adriana Maldonado, Leslie Martínez, Annette Montelongo, Anissa Moreno, Daniela Nava, Second Lieutenant, Astrid Navarete, Esperanza Olivas, Justin Prue, Marisa Ramírez, Jocelyn Rodríguez, Brenda Solís, Alicia Toledo, Danae Rebiño, Cristal Bedía, captain, Cassandra Zapata, Kritsa Gómez, Claritza Gómez, manager, and Ricardo Rangel, manager. Congratulations to the Linden B Johnson High School Dreamcatchers. Thank you, congratulations. Coming up, we have the Trauma Middle School Cheerleaders. They received second-place Los Intervenent Junior High Middle School Division Award at the NCAA Senior and Junior High School Division National Championship. Their sponsors are Cynthia Linecker and Gloria Archiniega, and their principal is Sethi Manchaca. Their cheer members are Sierra Alemán, Michelle Arispe, Vianney Canales, Emily Chapa, Cassandra Sisteros, Amanda Sparza, Zoe Ferguson, Jess Lynn Flores, Kiara Fuentes, Ariana Garza, Sarah Godínez, Lindsay Gutiérrez, Alisa Johnston, Sidney Lada, Zoe Linecker, Melanie Lozano, Anissa Martínez, Larissa Martínez, Rocky Martínez, Anissa Méndez, Brianna Rains, Daniela Reese, Madison Salinas, Ruby Vela, and Victoria Yarborough. Congratulations to the Trauma Middle School Cheerleaders. Thank you and congratulations. Our last team for this evening, but certainly not the least, is the Washington Middle School Cheerleaders. They received second place in the Non-Tumbling Advanced Division at American Cheer Power Six Flags Championship. Their sponsor is Jaclyn Coker and their principal is Beth Porter. Cheer members are Alessandra Pequeno, Ashley Sines, Kimberly Hernández, Second Lieutenant, Natalie Garza, Alexandra Villegas, Brianna Hernández, Jocelyn Pérez, Andrea Galván, Claudia Jiménez, Cassandra Peña, Natalie Bautista, Erica Ravago, Carla de la Rosa, co-captain, Ashley Serna, Destel Silva, First Lieutenant, Brianna Ornelas, captain, Jaylene Sandoval, and the Marist Omero. Thank you and congratulations for all your hard work.
Agenda item number five, public comments. Comments are limited to three speakers, three minutes per speaker. The board parliamentarian will be the timekeeper and will inform the speaker when they have one minute remaining. No more than three persons will be allowed to speak on any side of an issue. Should there be more than three people who wish to speak on a particular issue, they need to select not more than three representatives to speak for them. Comments must address items listed on the agenda. The presiding officer designated shall determine whether a person who wishes to address the board has attempted to resolve a matter administratively. If not, the person shall be directed to the appropriate policy as noted in BED Local to seek resolution before bringing the matter to a board at a subsequent meeting. Pursuant to 551.02 of the Texas Government Code, no board member administrator may respond to a member of the public unless such response to the recitation of district policy or a statement of specific factual information. When a speaker comes to the podium, please indicate what agenda item you will be addressing. Furthermore, please refrain from mentioning any employee's name, and any complaint about employee's duties or responsibilities should be channeled through the appropriate grievance policy. Mr. David Betis. Mr. Betis, you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is David Betis. I'm the president of United Classroom Teacher Association, and I'm here to address item 6C, the renewal of the district health insurance plan. I just wanted to remind everybody, three years ago, I came before you all when we were having a budget crisis in the state of Texas, and the board came through and helped to cover the increase that was coming up. I've been a member of the EBC Committee since 1999, and this year, we're faced with another little increase, but not because of usage, but because of the mandates of the Affordable Care Act. And I wanted to commend the board, and Mr. Santos, and the administration. I believe at the committee meeting last week, you indicated that you were gonna help mitigate the increase, and on behalf of the teachers, we'd like to thank you. Again, the board has come through for us year after year to give us a, an insurance plan that's superior to our sister district. Our premiums are less, our deductibles are less, our out-of-pocket costs are less, and then in essence, that's a raise for us, and we're talking thousands of dollars. So once again, I'd like to thank the board, Mr. Santos, administration, for whatever help that you give us tonight with the renewal of the insurance plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. Next, I have René de la Viña.
I have two items, which one is it? Is it the health insurance or the...?
The first one I have is the health insurance.
Health insurance, okay.
Well, I just want to mention on that real quick, that in reference to the health insurance, whatever you can do to help pay for the increase in the premium, I'm sure no employee here will argue that, but again, if you can help out our employees, we really appreciate that, okay? Thank you very much. Excuse me, René de la Viña for the record, TSA full-time president. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Santos. Thank you.
So before you leave, you want to comment, you want to use the three minutes on the testing issue?
On the testing? Okay, sure. Again, René de la Viña for the record, good evening, members of the board, members of the board, Superintendent Santos, for the record, René de la Viña, TSA full-time president, and I just want to convey to you from the teachers, and this comes from the teachers, to tell you that as far as the testing goes, to limit it to the very, very minimum. And it's not that they don't want to test, or they don't want to do the paperwork, that has nothing to do with it. The problem is, it takes instruction time from the children, and that's what gets them upset, because they're getting to the point now where they're testing more than they're teaching. I wrote a letter to the editor, and I put month by month, and I'm gonna do it again. I'm gonna break it down from January on now till the end of May, how many days teaching versus how many days testing. And I've got the documentation approved out. Whenever I come over here and I say something, I can back up what I'm saying. Again, I'm not trying to be negative, but please do what you can to eliminate all this testing, and we all know for a fact that the only ones that are benefiting from testing is the Pearson Company. They're making millions of dollars off the state of Texas, and that's a fact. I just wanted to mention that, you know, we believe in accountability, and that's all good and dandy, but I can assure you, and I'm a 31-year veteran teacher, so I've been there, done that, I can assure you that if you eliminate a lot of this testing, I guarantee you'll get better grades, because let the teachers teach, that's all I want.
Thank you. Okay, I've got Mr. Josel Wandel.
Good evening, Mr. Wandel, you have three minutes. Good afternoon. Now, I also want to address the issue of the testing with CBAs. I think that it's been disinformationed that we experience some value testing, and we do value the testing, and I want to repeat that, we do value and understand testing, not the CBA excessive thing that's happening. I believe that most of the parents can understand when something is explained to them. When there is a legalese, is your lawyer? Maybe I can't understand that, but if he explains it to me, I can understand. If there's a doctor and he has a medical term, if he explains it to me, I can understand. This, I can't understand. I wish somebody could explain to me, what's the difference between a spiral and a comprehensive on the testing? And it may seem like a small issue to someone, but to me, it's important to understand that. I would like to know, well, I don't understand why right now they're taking so much issue with the CBAs and spending so much energy and time in it, when we have so many issues like the one at United Middle with that teacher and that police on campus. You probably already know what I'm talking about. The issue that happened in Kaden Elementary, the recent issue at Alexander. Mr. Santos talked about the social media. I encourage you to use social media and to communicate with us, the parents, who inevitably you're gonna end up talking to at some point. I know that he also mentioned in the social media to call your campus. There's some parents who have contacted me and they've called their campus. One parent, she was very irate, because she was called into the principal's office, and she pulled out a sheet from the Facebook page and asked her to explain why she had made this comment. I don't think that's appropriate, and I don't think it's, it may not be important to any of you, to us as parents it is. I know I only have three minutes, and I think if I touch on the CBA, we can go for hours on this, but I would like to say that contacting the campus to us is not an option. We would like to contact our trustees, but Mr. Ramírez, he's never answered the phone. He chose to lose office, Mr. Ramírez. Mr. Gilpin, I've also contacted you, you never called me back. At least someone calls me back, I like, one phone call back, and you listen to my yard. Thank you for answering my phone calls. Mr. Santos as well. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. David Betis, your second item.
Sorry, I don't have my United shirt on, I can't change it, but I'm coming as a teacher, as a member of the committee that helped to address the concerns that were brought to the board, to Mr. Santos. And I just wanted to say that we spent many hours, teachers, trying to solve the concerns that were brought up. We had our executive directors, Mr. Ramírez, Mr. Canales, Mr. González, that were in charge of the three committees, but they actually just kind of let us, kind of got us started, but they stepped back and let us teachers come up with a solution that I hope will address the concerns that you brought up, sir. And, you know, I think, I think we've done a good job. We spent many, many hours, many hours, trying to, trying to, again, resolve all these issues to help minimize the disruption to instruction, but yet find out where our kids are at. We've seen that these CBAs are a good indicator of what, what scores we're going to get on the test. It's a fact. And, and we need them, but again, I understand the disruption to instruction, so hopefully we came up with a good product that... So hopefully, we came up with a good product that I think Dr. Geraldo has presented to you all and that you'll approve tonight. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betis. All right. Item number six, consent agenda.
Item A, we still go with number five. I know that we met on May 13th. Please take the instructional and business, make a motion to approve item A through AM.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion on any of these items? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Item seven, items for individual consideration. Item A, approval of the minutes for the month of April 2014. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve item A. Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seven B, approval of donations.
Yes, Mr. Martinez, my own members of the board, it is recommended that the board trustees graciously accept the following donations and they will be attached to the minutes. We have seven donations under $1,000 for grant told this month of $1,061 and we graciously thank these people who are helping our campuses.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second then.
I have a motion in the second. All those, any discussion on any of these issues? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Item C, a public hearing pursuant to section 28.002 of the Texas Education Code. The board shall take an opportunity, the board shall provide an opportunity to members of the public and district employees to comment regarding agenda item 7D, which is the Achieve 3000 for high schools for 2014, 2015. Do we have any, any member of the public wishing to comment regarding the Achieve 3000?
There should be somebody from administration to state the facts of this.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Montemayor. My name is David Canales, executive director for High School Education, Mr. Santos. We are recommending Achieve 3000 for the high school. As you are aware, that we did a little pilot study at United South High School in LBJ and we feel comfortable that the program will significantly help us with our students that need the assistance in reading.
And the public hearing, it follows the same rules as the public comments. If anybody at this time wants to come to the podium and comment about this program, you have three minutes.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Alejandra Diaz Lightner. I'm a teacher at United High School, ninth grade campus. And recently, I was trained to use the Achieve 3000 program, which is, in my opinion, a very good program. It is worth the investment. Unfortunately, if the student does not take the level set exam seriously, we could have a reading on that student's lexile level to be at a negative number. So in my experience with my students, I have one who came up with a lexile of 170. That means that at 75%, that student comprehends at something below first grade level. So this, we're talking about a ninth grade student that's extremely below satisfactory. If the student does not take it seriously, then the level set will be something like unsuccessful, let's say. The good thing is that the teacher can always create units of instruction and the teacher can always select based on a particular topic. So for example, when I was teaching of mice and men and some of the topics were friendship or discrimination of certain aptitudes for individuals, I could have gone into the system and under Achieve 3000 selected any article that related in some way to the topic of the book. And then the students receive those assignments and they can perform it. There's five basic levels or steps that the student has to participate in in order for the improvement to happen. If the student does not take it seriously, however, it's not going to be very successful. A lot of it depends on the student. There's something that the student can also complete at home and that's of course entirely up to the child to do it. It will not do, it will not allow any student to do level setting at home, only in the classroom session. The other good thing about it is that there's points and it seems that there's some sort of raffles going on if the student achieves certain score points in the system. I don't know how that works. There's also the benefit that within the classroom, you could foster some sort of positive competition and the teacher can do, implement some sort of rewards. I believe that if the students who are promoted from eighth grade to ninth grade could go to a summer program with an intensive training on this, under this particular one, it would be quite beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you for supporting. Anybody else who wants to comment regarding the Achieve 3000?
Mr. Canales, can you state the cost of the program and whether or not there was any alternatives that were considered?
The cost of the program as of today, and I know that Courtney Jackson is still working with the vendor, is $183,503 and makes sense for all four high schools that are present.
What about middle school and...
The middle school, as it stated earlier by David Gonzalez, his, his cost would be closer to $412,881.93.
So there'll be some lagging between middle school and high school?
There's a delineation between middle school and high school and combination, it's a combined price of, let's see, I want to say it's about $596, around there. But like I said, this Courtney Jackson is still working on trying to get the promotional price and that's something that I think they're still working on. And as far as alternatives, we looked at the RE180, looked at what, you know, the benefits of that and we just felt that this was a stronger program, sir.
All right. All right, I have a motion to, anybody else like to comment? A motion to close? Can I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
A motion.
In a second.
I think we have a...
We have one more comment. Could you state your name for the record?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Monica Water. I'm the reading pilot at the Suez Osasuna School. Good evening, Mr. Santos and Mr. Cruz. On Achieve 3000, I'm a middle school parent and we've been using the program for the last two years and we've seen growth, especially with our special ed students. It is a program that of course, like anything else, has to be monitored. The SC do take a pre-level set test, but again, they have to be monitored while doing this program to make sure that the five steps that are, that the program dealt with is done in a correct way. It is a good program. I've seen the growth. Of course, like anything else, it needs to be monitored and I, I do agree with the program. It's a good program. We're using our middle school, our middle schools, Suez Osasuna schools, the person who used it last year. We started and I see growth and it is a good program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to point out one more thing, just for clarification, the price I gave you is the cost over three years, period.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Canales. Can I get another motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, my motion.
Second.
My motion is second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay, public hearing is closed. Item D, approval of Achieve 3000 for 2014, 2015.
Make a motion.
Second.
We got a motion in the second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, item D passes. Item E, a public hearing pursuant to section 28.002 of the Texas Education Code. The board shall take, provide an opportunity to members of the public and district employees to comment regarding agenda item 7F, which is the curriculum-based assessment CBA district-wide process.
I believe somebody from administration is also going to address that?
Yes. If I can set the stage for this, this item, we've been, we've been talking about this item since February and recently, a week, it was a committee that was formed that included approximately 54 teachers, 10 administrators that met approximately three to four times over the last three months to review the current CBA curriculum-based assessments that were being provided not only at the elementary, the middle school and the high schools. And every grade level was represented at this committee and there were...
Every campus.
And every campus in the district was also represented and clearly, we had administrators not only from curriculum, but the different campuses as well to talk about some of the issues that had been brought up with some of the, some of the people who just spoke on the, on the public, public comments had mentioned. Once they reviewed the, what was being, what was being suggested or recommended by, by the individual committees, they took it back to their individual campuses presented to their SBDM committees, which is made up of not only public members, business community members, but teachers and administrators there at that campus as well. They came back, met, reviewed the plan again and came up with a recommendation. Dr. Geraldo, could you review that recommendation?
Yes. Good evening, board members, Mr. Santos, Mr. Cruz, members of the audience. This evening, I just, again, just want to state something that we know they will share and it is the vision that we have for United. And then we do believe in the high quality and equitable education at every one of our campuses for every one of our students. With that premise, this year, we began to implement some major initiatives, one of them being concept-based, that we have a master class and some of the teachers on the master class were also part of this CBA committee. We also implemented ABDOS, which is pedagogy and writing and the teachers receive a total of 12 intense days of training. We also continued our, we initiated new principals and new system principals academy and continue with our aspiring principals, making sure that our leadership at our campuses continues to be strengthened. We also restructured the former three Ts that had a name change this past year to go into the CBA's curriculum-based assessments and now we included a teacher reflection portion of that. We also had the development of a district-level technology committee meeting that has already started to make recommendations for the purchase of mobile devices and their technology across our district. And then indeed, as you mentioned, Mr. Montemayor, we had the CBA committee that was made up of 54 teachers from across the district, that every campus was represented at least by one teacher, if not two. We had 10 principals who were also represented and then indeed, it was taken back to the SBDM at every one of our campuses. So every one of our campuses had the opportunity to provide information, recommendations to as far as the CBA. Now, before I go into the CBA, this, this morning, we also received our STARs course and I will just briefly just go over those results because indeed, that is reflective of this initiatives. I would not say one or the other, but in, in combination, they do reflect this. And of course, that is the unwavering commitment that we have from our administrators, from our teachers, from our parents, from our students to what we're doing and of course, your undeniable support to the initiatives that we have our district and I thank you for that. So this afternoon, this evening, I will share some of those reports and this is preliminary data that we just received again this afternoon. And again, this are preliminary and what we have here, we are comparing the 13, 14, the 13th school year scores to this year. And as you can see, at every one of them, we had increases. In the reading third through fifth, this year, preliminary results are at 70%. Last year, we're at 65%, so we had a 5% increase. Reading sixth through eighth, the score this time is 70%. Last year, we're also at 65, so we had an overall of 5% when you combine reading third through eighth and we're still pending fifth grade and eighth grade second administration. So the score of 70 can only increase when we receive those scores. In math, at the elementary, third through fifth, we also had an increase of 5% points from 68 to 73. In the math, sixth through eighth, we had a 3% increase from 69 to 72. The combined sum, third through eighth, shows us an increase of 5%. Again, we're still waiting for the third, fifth and eighth second administration for math and so that number will only increase. For fourth grade, and congratulations to all of our writing fourth grade teachers because they had a 9% increase from 66 to 75. And that is a standalone grade. In other words, it does not have the third, the fifth grade, it's only reflective of the fourth grade work on the fourth grade teachers. Seventh grade had an increase of 4% from 61 to 65. Combined fourth and seventh, we had an increase of 7%. Science, again, a standalone subject, only reflective of the fifth grade science teachers, they had an increase of 7% from 62 to 69. Science, eighth grade, also a standalone, 3% increase from 64 to 67. When you combine it, we had an increase of 5%. Social studies, a standalone, we had an increase of 6% from 49 to 55. And that's at the elementary. So you can see that at every single one of those, elementary and middle school, we only had increases at the district level. So again, a combination of all these initiatives and all our work. If we go now to the next page, here you have the elementary. At the elementary, again, you see very good gains in fourth grade reading. Again, our fourth grade teachers in the reading area, they had an increase of 9% from 61 to 70%. When we look at other gains, we look at the, at the fifth grade first administration of math, this one we had already reported as a 7% increase and I'm now just focusing on those that are highest increases. The writing fourth grade, 9% increase, science, 7% increase. So again, nothing but either we kept and remained back to school or we increased. Again, a combination of all those initiatives and the hard work of our principals, our teachers, our students, our parents. If we can go to the middle school, please? In middle school, we also experienced those increases. At the sixth grade reading, and again, congratulations, those sixth grade reading scores, we had an increase of 9% points from 58 to 67. So again, excellent results. We did have a small decrease in the math and we will be addressing it immediately. We also had big increases on the sixth grade math, 7% increase. And in social studies, standalone, like I mentioned, 6% increase. So again, overall, we are very pleased with the results and commend our administrators, again, our teachers, our students, our parents for their commitment and again, that undeniable support to our initiatives. I don't know if there's any questions as that's part?
On that part, no. Anybody have any questions?
Is there any public comments? Three minutes?
I believe she's not through with her...
I, I need a couple more pieces.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Now, when we go to, you know, again, tonight, I'm going to be sharing with you the recommendations from that committee that we had and from the SBDM committee. And again, I want to acknowledge the committee's hard work and diligence in developing suggested calendar and the administration recommendations. Also for their campuses, because every campus provided us feedback and we took all that feedback and interpreted and putting it together in our new guidelines. One of the first recommendations that the committee had was that all grade level members agreed that CBAs are needed. They recommended also to keep a CBA name. They felt that parents, teachers and community were getting used to the name, so they wanted to keep the name. They also made sure that the definition of a CBA was done, that CBA does not follow the state assessment blueprint. It is a class test and it is going to be developed by our teachers this time. So it is, again, it's a test. Elementary recommended to have two CBAs in the fall, three CBAs in the fall at the middle school. And if we can please have that chart? High school, two CBAs per semester, making, making the instance that at the high school, we have two different groups of students in the fall and in the spring, so they indeed take only two CBAs. Now, for benchmarks, at the elementary, they are recommending two benchmarks, one in the fall, one in the spring. At the middle school, they're recommending only one benchmark and that being in the spring. At the high school, one benchmark per semester, again, that is different students. And I, I would add that this is not, does not violate House Bill 5, Section 37, Texas Education Code 39.0263, in which it clearly states that not more than two benchmarks are allowed. Indeed, at the elementary, we have two. At the middle school, we have one. At the high school, we have one per semester. So we are making very sure that we did not violate that Texas Education Code. Now, on grading, also the committee recommended that the CBA continued count is a regular test and it's, for Texas Education Code, the teacher retains the autonomy to award grades. So thus dropping or adding points would remain at the teacher's discretion as long as it's applied at the same for all the students in the classroom. We also looked into the modified teacher reflection. In this case, the modification is to where the teachers would not need to record and copy from the DMAC reports onto the chart, they will only need to highlight. The only item that they will have... The only item that they will have to write is that instructional plan. And that one, as you see the scores, you can see that our teachers indeed do very well on doing those updates as they needed, depending on the results of the CBAs. In addition, the CBAs, the teacher reflections will not be required for the benchmark, only for the CBAs. Now, as far as the detailed communication plan, indeed, they also gave us good recommendations on the plans that is going to be for the board, for the principals, for the teachers, for the parents, for the community at large. We will be putting together some PowerPoint presentations, we'll be doing some recordings, making sure that that is required across, so that everyone is aware of exactly what it entails, what the CBA program is that UISD. The other item that the committee wanted, and we will definitely already start working on that, is to have a CBA calendar. The recommendation was to have it as part of our UISD calendar. To do that would be just too much information into one document, so we will have a designated CBA calendar to where every parent, every teacher would know exactly which test is going to be administered one day at what grade level and what content area. So that will be available, and we will make it available not only on the district webpage, but also on every campus's webpage. So wherever our community would search for that, they would find it, and we will also put it on many of our publications for those individuals that do not have access to our website. Now, another recommendation made by that committee was, because we brought it to them, do we continue to purchase assessments, or do we need to do it locally developed? Elementary, middle school recommendation was that they needed, that we would, they would like for them to be purchased, but for them to have the opportunity to review them, to indeed make sure that they were error-free. Due to the timing to do an RFP, the request or proposal, we'll delay it until the year fifteen sixteen. So as a result, we already having coders, and we have the applications ready for our teachers to apply, to participate in those coders, which will be also now developing our, our CBAs, with plenty of time for them also to review them, for them to be error-free. Another directive that we got from our superintendent was that the campuses would not be duplicating those tests at their campuses, they, they would be done at our print shop. So they, the timing of that would be even more relevant, to make sure that the campuses get them on time to administer. At the high school, the high school recommendation was that they, from the very beginning, they recommendation wanted, that they wanted to develop their own tests. They wanted item bags, which we're going to be making available for them, and they wanted to develop their own tests. That came from the high school. Also, the last recommendation that they made, and I'm, again, I'm summarizing, I had done the presentation, but I'm summarizing the highlights of their recommendations, was that to limit the CBA administration time to a class period. And thus, they also gave us, in the charts that you see, they see the number of questions that would be now included into the test, so to make sure that that instructional time is protected, to where there's only one, limit of a one period per class. Now, as far as what other options, we looked into, again, we're looking into the RFP, which is the Request for Proposal, and that would open up for vendors that would develop those tests that are aligned specifically for our scope and sequence. And that's what makes a difference on, when you have something that is off the shelf per se, that we could purchase, but these are, have to be just tailored to UISD, for UISD needs. And the cost that we're looking at, the coders to develop the CBAs and to review them, would be at approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that would be going to the teacher coders that would be applying to provide the services for, for our district. And that now does conclude. I don't know if there's any questions as far as the recommendations done by the committee.
Do we have any recommend, are there any questions for the, for Dr. Rorla? Doctor, thank you. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment regarding the recommendations of the committee?
For the record, the only MTSA full-time president, the only thing, you know, I understand what the central office administrators, administrators are trying to do, they mean well. Dr. Rorla, I know she means well. But the problem is, when the scores are low, this is what you don't see, because I file grievance after grievance after grievance, complaint after complaint. Whenever the scores are low, they start harassing the teachers. It's the teachers' fault, no one else's fault, the teachers. Don't you think it would be a lot more effective if you would motivate your teachers versus putting them down? And let me tell you the techniques that they use, the school principals and the system principal. They do excessive walkthroughs, looking for negative, something wrong, write them up, and this pertains to testing.
Okay. If we can keep it in testing.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm trying to tell you. Okay, but what I'm saying, because when the scores are low, they start using these tactics, Tinas, it's called teacher in need of assistance, and they start doing walkthroughs, and then they give them growth plans. And instead of being used, and the whole purpose of all these things is to help a teacher become a better teacher, but instead, it's being used as a tool of punishment, and this is the argument. And I think what this district should do is, you ought to have a workshop, how to motivate teachers, and the perfect gentleman to do that, and I'm, and I'm very impressed, because this guy is a very positive administrator, and I usually don't, I usually don't compliment administrators, but this guy's exceptional. His name is David Gonzalez. He's excellent. I have been able to resolve most of my grievances because of that gentleman. That man knows what he's talking about. I guarantee you, if you had a lot of guys all over like him, they wouldn't need me anymore. I can assure you that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other person wishes to comment regarding the, the district-wide process on curriculum-based system?
Hello, my name is Solan, and I'm a crime also as well. I applaud the unwavering commitment, that's what Rorla stated, but I wish that unwavering commitment was to my children and the children of UISD. There's a saying, statistician say that, where you can't dazzle them with knowledge, baffle them with statistics. Comes out with a five percent, three percent, nine percent. At what cost? And is it true? You can, everybody knows that statistics can be, can be moved up and down whatever way you want. But even if it's true, at what price, at what price are these CBAs coming at? And I'm not talking about the financial cost, I'm talking about the kids that are vomiting on the hallways, the kids that don't want to go back to school, the kids, the kids that are all stressed out. Is it really worth it? Is it really worth it? That's all I have to say. I mean, these CBAs, to me, is just puffing, and it just brings up the caveat emptor. And I caution all of you, and I know you understand the caveat emptor, I wish they would understand, because the look from me is, I know that he doesn't understand half of what was said, because I didn't understand what half of what was said by Mr. Rorla either. Thank you.
Okay, I hope I don't get nervous again up here. I'm not a big speaker. I would like to say thank you, first of all. Well, my name is Deborah Mitchell, I work in elementary. I would like to say thank you for doing the reviewing and everything that's come together because of that meeting. One thing I would like to ask, though, the, the numbers that came out there, I know our, our school is stage one for, for the STAR, and these scores that she's showing you, the students are passing the STAR with a fifty-five in reading, a sixty in writing, and a sixty in math. Those are what they're getting, and that's why it shows like, oh my God, they're doing so great, but they're not. If they're going to pass with a fifty-five in a state assess test next year in fifth grade, what are they going to do? This is reading at a fifty-five, writing at a sixty, and then they want to put the CBAs as a test and make them pass with a seventy, well, they might, why just let, go ahead and let, let them pass at a thirty? That's what they're not understanding. The state isn't even requiring them to, to pass as a seventy. Yes, we did good, I can tell you, fourth grade did really well on my campus, but the kids are getting sixties. And that's why it's showing that we're doing good, but they're not really doing good. So that's what I need you guys to understand. We're still not getting the opportunity to instruct the way that we could. These kids that were at sixty-fives and sixty-eights, they could have been at those seventies and eighties if we had more time to do instruction. Now, I know she's saying she got teachers or, you know, they, we're do, we're trying this committee, but not everybody's involved in the committee. You have a handful of people, I don't know what's going to happen, they haven't told me what's going to happen, I'm still in the dark, like a lot of the other teachers. We need more communication, and we need for these CBAs, if they are going to continue for next year, like in the fall that they said, then let's do it as a, what's the word? Not, not giving it as a grade, give it as a, we're still in that process of pilot program, yes, and we're still harming the children by taking it as a test grade. That is my main concern, you're still hurting the magnet kids, you're still hurting, and I know Mr. Palacios will still disagree with me, and that's okay, that, we're still trying to figure this out, and that's a good thing. But I still, I just need to know, they're not passing at seventies, or eighties, or nineties, they're passing at fifties, and that's why it looks good. And that's what you need to know. The CBAs are still harming.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Can I get your name for the record?
I'm sorry?
Your name?
Oh, Deborah Ann Mitchell.
Thank you.
And I elementary, thank you.
Edna Melas, Elina's elementary, second grade teacher. Another thing I want to mention as well is, I know that the last time I went before the board, and I asked, okay, where's the data in this? And I'm glad to see that data was provided. How accurate is this data? Now, if she's comparing two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen, this fifty-five for reading was lower in two thousand thirteen, might have been a fifty. I'm second grade, so I'm not very familiar, but I know it's lower. Now, when she also mentions in two thousand fourteen, she's saying, she's insinuating that it was due to CBA, at least, that's the impression I'm getting. However, is it, was it because of CBA? Because as far as I know, CBA was halted because teachers were unable to instruct, the time wasn't there to instruct. All we were doing was testing, testing, testing. And keep in mind, every grade level is different. I take second grade, and not only would I have to do CBAs, I also had to do running records, I mean, there was other assessments going on, TPR, TPRI as well, there's many things going on. I mean, if you would take the time to do more research into the amount that we are allowed to teach, it's minimal. And because not only are we doing assessments, we have all this paperwork that we have to do as well, we have the lab that we have to be updating. I, I'm glad to hear that she complimented the fact that we are very good at updating. Yes, we are, because apparently, that's all we do. We have to be doing all these updateings, all this paperwork, progress monitoring, tier two, tier three, RTIs. Do you all have any idea the length of time required to do one RTI? The process for one child to get the needed help, it's overwhelming. Now, thank you. The last comment I want to make, she also stated that this was for, they formed a committee of fifty-four teachers. I mean, I'm not familiar, but I will be very familiar, with how many teachers are there in a district this large? I bet there was a lot of teachers that were opposed to the CBA, but did we have a chance to voice our concerns? No. I would like the attention be given to the CBA, the same attention and the support that we were asked also to provide for the bond election. I would like something like that done for CBAs. Why not send out a survey to teachers and have them express their concerns? Because these, this committee went before SBDM. Do you all know how many SBDM members are there? And how many parents? This is a very large district. Okay, you say a hundred, let's say. We have over three thousand. And, I'll just touch base, okay? So the same attention that you were, you gave to the bond, I would like that's done with the CBAs, not only to the staff, but to parents as well, because they are taxpayers, we are taxpayers. And I'm sorry to say, but we vote for you guys, and we depend on you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close public hearing?
Come on.
Motion to second to close public hearing regarding the curriculum-based assessments. Any discussion? All's in favor? All's opposed? Item F, consider to take appropriate action regarding curriculum-based assessment district-wide process. Got a motion to approve? I have a motion to approve on second. Motion to second, any discussion? All's in favor? All's opposed? Consider to take appropriate action, passes. Item G, first reading of policy, CDC, local, other revenues, grants, and private sources.
There's no action needed on agenda item G or H.
Okay. Then we'll move to item eight, close session, board will adjourn to close session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Attorney Meeting Act, A five-five-one-point-zero-five-one, consultation with board's attorney.
And we could just, Mr. Montemayor, for the record, the board will adjourn agenda items A, B, C, and D.
Thank you. A, B, C, and D.
And just the time is?
Seven forty-eight.
Seven forty-eight.
We should be back before ten o'clock.
One hour.
Item nine, ten fifteen, we are reconvened for closed session.
Mr. Montemayor, members of the board, with respect to agenda item nine A, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution of TIRZ projects as explained and presented as option two to the school board.
Got a motion? Got a motion? Any discussion? All's in favor? Item passes.
I abstain.
Uh, read with.
One abstention.
One abstention. With respect to agenda item nine B, the recommendation is to authorize administration legal counsel to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of a four-point-zero acre tract located at southeast corner of Alexander High School.
With regards to, got a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? One abstention.
Regarding agenda item nine C, the recommendation is to authorize administration and legal counsel to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of a twelve-point-seventeen acre tract located at the east of Alexander High School.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All's in favor? Item passes, one abstention.
Recommendation on agenda item nine D is authorize the amendment to the development agreement with EG Ranch Limited pertaining to the property located off Highway three-fifty-nine south of City Florido landfill.
Motion to second, any discussion? All's in favor? Motion passes.
Recommendation on agenda item nine E is to authorize a purchase and sale agreement pertaining to the property for sale of North House Incorporated pertaining to eight-point-nine-five-six-nine acres in the Hoyle Creek subdivision.
Motion?
Come on.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All's in favor? Motion passes.
Recommendation nine F is to authorize administration legal counsel to enter into purchase-sell agreement for the purchase of fourteen acres tract in Lomas del Sur subdivision from A and W Real Estate Two Limited.
Motion?
Come on. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All's in favor? Motion passes.
Recommendation on agenda item nine G is to authorize construction, Las Blanca's Road pursuant to the sale-purchase agreement dated May nine, two thousand and eleven, and amendments to the agreement as discussed in closed session.
Motion?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All's in favor? Motion passes.
Recommendation nine H, authorize construction easement negotiations to the Kiota twenty-acre tract that is, as identified in the settlement agreement in cost number two thousand six, CDQ zero-zero-one-eight-four-C-one, in the County Court at Law Number One, Webb County, Texas.
Come on.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All's in favor? Motion passes.
Recommendation, uh, it was going to be done collectively on I, J, K, and L. Mr. Perez?
Do you need board, board president, board members? It's settled.
It's settled.
It's settled.
Still up?
There it's on. There we go.
The motion for I, J, K, and L will be, motion to approve by resolution pursuant to Local Government Code, Section two-seventy-two-point-oh-one-A, the sale and/or exchange of real property with improvements owned by UISD consisting of the individual sale of a five-acre tract where the food production center is located, a three-acre tract where the Step Academy is located, and a seventeen-acre tract of unplanted property located next to and east of the Step Academy, and the sale and/or exchange of real property.
production center is located, a three acre tract where the Step Academy is located, and a 17 acre tract of unplanted property located next to and east of the Step Academy, and the sale and/or exchange of real property of all three tracts as a whole consisting of 25 acres. Second. Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Edna Melas, Perez Elementary Principal.
Yes, Mr. Rondo, members of board, recommendation for Perez Elementary School is Anulde Hernandez. Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor? Item passes, item agenda N, appointment of director for Step Academy.
Yes, recommendation to be the director of Step Academy is Heraldo Rodriguez.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And O is appointment of chief of police.
Mr. Rondo, all members of board, there's no recommendation. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Last item adjournment.
Second.
Got a motion to approve. We adjourn.